The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, well, welcome everybody to the town council meeting. We will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Counselor Angel Kristensen, Counselor Daniele, Counselor Giannelli.
Here.
Mayor Krasinski.
Here.
Counselor Letty.
Here.
Counselor Pagliano.
Here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
May I have your form?
Thank you. So, first up is, as always in our council meetings, is our audience of citizens. So if anyone is in the audience that wishes to address the council on anything, whether it's on this agenda or anything at all, anything that's on your mind, this is your time to address us. We also, as you noted, have, may or may not see the agenda, we have three public hearings tonight, which also, if you're here for one of those public hearings, when that public hearing is called, the members of the audience that wish to speak about that particular ordinance that we're looking to change, you'd be also welcome to speak at that time. But you don't necessarily need to wait for that, so anybody who wishes to address the council during the audience of citizens, now is your time. Seeing no hands, I will go ahead and close the audience of citizens, and thank you. We will move on to our meeting agenda, and we'll start with our consent agenda. So we've, the counselor, the council has had the information, we've reviewed it, and we can make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the seven items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on any of these? Any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Okay, so now we will go to our public hearings. So, the first, you don't have that other sheet, Kate. Let's see here. That other sheet that we always, I always use, Kate, that other sheet that I use for public hearings?
It's just simple.
I don't need it?
Just, okay. For the bonding.
But we're gonna, we're gonna do the three separate, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Just talk about the first one.
Yep. Okay, so, the first public hearing, we're gonna meet, we're meeting tonight to discuss it. The first ordinance, the first public hearing is on an ordinance amending Section 440, payment of delinquent taxes required for the issuance of permits, licenses, or certificates. That's the purpose of our public hearing. And, one second here. This, yeah, Jack, just so, just so the audience understands what this one is before we ask for any public comments.
Currently, the way the ordinance is written, if a, if a tenant was to vacate a piece of property and did not pay their personal property taxes, the owner of the property would be held responsible to pay those taxes. And we've gone over that. We've had several owners of properties come in and request that we discontinue that practice. We will not issue them a building permit or any other permits if they, if the taxes are not paid. We do have exceptions to that, but typically we don't grant those. So they're asking that we change the ordinance such that the owner of the property is not responsible for the personal property taxes of a tenant.
Right, which, right, so, yeah, we just, it didn't make, it doesn't make any sense that someone's leasing out their property and the person that has leased the property leaves and doesn't pay a tax bill, let's say they leave Berlin and they have a personal property tax or whatever tax they haven't paid, the landlord would not be responsible for that tax. So, that had been an ordinance that had been changed a few years ago, so we're looking to change it back to take that out of there. And obviously, the person who owns the property is the responsible party, not a landlord that should not be responsible for someone else's taxes, so. Okay, so, this is the public comment section of the hearing. If anyone has any questions on this or wants to talk about this particular ordinance, this is the time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing of that, of that particular ordinance. And town council comments. Anyone wish to speak?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll close our town council comments, and I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and we will take action on this, take a motion.
We'll wait till...
To the end?
I'm sorry.
We're gonna do all three?
After all three.
All three? Okay, we'll do all three?
All three, and then we'll do that.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay.
The next one would be on the removal.
Yeah, 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 okay, I thought we'd do them separately, so we're not, we'll take them, we'll just do the motions after the three hearings?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
They're all separate.
Okay, gotcha. All right, that's all right. So, all right, so the second public hearing we have tonight is on an ordinance amending Section 1411, removal of snow and ice. So if you would just give us a summary of that.
What we're doing is part of changing the ordinance, we're including a paragraph such that the homeowner where a fire hydrant is located would be responsible for clearing the fire hydrant, just as they would be the sidewalk. And it would be, basically, it's an addition of just a paragraph, all the other parts of the ordinance remain intact.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, but first is our public comment section of this public hearing. So if anyone has a comment on this particular ordinance concerning the removal of snow and ice from fire hydrants, now would be the time to speak up as a member of the public. Hearing none, I will close our public comment section, and we'll go to our town council section.
Agenda item, we can talk on that.
Yeah, we can talk about the agenda item too. If we have any comments here, though, anybody? I just, we gotta, right, we gotta, we all got an email from a couple of residents, and I don't guess any of us would probably disagree with this, but, and it happens from time to time, unfortunately, in some of the big snowstorms, that the town, especially in cul-de-sacs in particular, the town piles up a lot of snow in order to clear the cul-de-sac, and, you know, there would be not just a little pile of snow by your fire hydrant that came out of the sky, but there will be, the whole street is piled over the fire hydrant. So, you know, the resident made a very good point, and I would, I know we, with our contractors, come in and generally, a little bit later in the storm, clear out most of the cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, we have people who call, and they have an enormous amount of snow placed. Another place that occurs is on street corners.
Yeah.
You have two streets that come together, and, you know, normally you'd be shoveling, you know, maybe a foot or two feet of snow if you're in a heavy storm, and some homeowners will call and they'll say they have eight feet of snow there. And what we try to do is get out afterwards, and we try to help them clear those out. You can't hold somebody responsible for eight feet of snow.
Right. So, so, just, so it's, you know, clear to the residents that rode, and if anybody has any questions, the town will be held responsible too, to come in if they pile a large amount of snow on a fire hydrant near your property, it would be, we would not hold you responsible if there's, you know, five feet of snow piled there from the snowplow. We'd have the town come back and do that, and they typically do anyway. So just be patient, but if it, you know, it gets later into the day or the next day, you know, feel free to call the town manager or call town hall, and they'll come out and clean off that area. But if it's just a straight street and, you know, there's a fire hydrant on your property, then the homeowner's responsible to clean around those hydrants, whatever's reasonable. Anybody else from the council? Yes, sir.
Do we need language in the ordinance to say that, or?
We don't have the language now, you know, just, we don't have that type of language on sidewalks currently.
No, I mean for the hydrants, flooded hydrants.
For the town side, you mean?
Right, right.
What do we think?
No.
Mr. Council? No?
No, I think it's fine.
I mean, I think that, I mean, I know the town, I know on my street it's a cul-de-sac, and the town does come later. Typically, they'll come and clean up the cul-de-sac when there's a lot of snow blocking, because sometimes even blocking people's driveways, right? And the contractors do come up and clean it. They always have, you know, so, but sometimes it takes a while. But at least people can understand, and if we get the calls at town hall, we can tell them that someone's coming, right? Jeff, you don't think we need any...
I think B, as written, is fine.
Okay, okay. Anyone else?
Good.
Okay, so we'll close the town council comments, and we'll close the public hearing at this time on that ordinance. Move on to the third ordinance, public hearing, on an ordinance regulating the idling of vehicles. Our third. Then, what do we have on that one, Jack?
That one, that was, that's in response to, we have one particular place in town, business that the people are parking on the street, and they're leaving their trucks, their vehicles, large trucks, idling. In response to that, we had put up no idling signs. When we do that, we can't enforce it because we don't have an ordinance to enforce. So what we're doing is we're closing the gap, and we're saying that if you have a large vehicle over a certain size, and if you're in municipal areas, in an area near residence, not to leave the truck idling. And that is consistent also. There are state guidelines from DEEP about idling vehicles too. There are certain exceptions to that, if it's holding food or something like that. But it, we're being consistent with other guidelines.
Okay. So that's this third public hearing. Now is the time for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience wishes to address this particular ordinance change, now would be the time. Seeing none, I will close that portion, and we're on the town council comments now. Any comments?
Real quick, just to, just add upon what you said. I believe state statute exempts the idling of fire trucks and ambulance, correct?
Oh, yeah. Just the vehicles.
That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Alex. So, hearing no more comments from the council, we will close this public hearing, and we will now move on to our agenda, where we will now consider each of those three items, and we will adopt them as, we'll see how we vote on them. So we'll start with item one, which is the amendment to ordinance, payment of delinquent taxes required for permit issuance. Take a motion on that?
Okay. Move to adopt the amendment to Section 4-40 entitled, "Payment of Delinquent Taxes Required for Permit Issuance, Removing the Requirement That a Landlord Be Held Responsible for Its Tenant's Delinquent Personal Property Taxes."
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Just a quick point, that I'm happy that, you know, a town resident or two came forward and brought this to our attention. It's not, you know, something that we all would have picked up on this unless somebody brought it to our attention. So, you know, we want people to come forward with things and ask questions so that we can look at it and bring things up to date and change things that would make sense. And this is something that makes sense. You know, you want somebody to take their property and possibly improve it, bring in a different tenant, and then find out they can't do it because the previous tenant is gone, they're out of business, they still owe taxes, and you can't do anything with your property. And this makes sense to change this.
Okay, anyone else? Counsel? No? Yes, sir?
The other thing I would add to this is that you also have to keep in mind that the owner of the real property would have no way of knowing that the tenant was delinquent on personal property taxes.
Right.
Because if they filed a declaration, that's confidential, and they're not, the real property owner is not liable for the payment of the personal property taxes, so they wouldn't...
Somebody even know? Yeah, right. Yeah, the whole thing seems quite strange.
Certainly, you understand that the, I wasn't here when the ordinance was originally written, but I'm sure the intent was to increase the collection rate for personal property taxes.
Right.
Because that's always been a challenge in all municipalities, because so many small businesses leave, and you don't know until they're gone.
Right, they left town and with the tax bill. Yeah. No, we understand what we probably were trying to accomplish, but, yeah, just to make the landlord liable, that's just unreasonable. Okay, so any further comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. So that ordinance is now adopted. So, number two, summary.
Agenda item number two is the ordinance amending and adding paragraphs to Section 14-11 for removal of snow and ice, and that pertains to fire hydrants and the snow around them. And if I may, I just want to add, just so that the council's aware, I did receive at least one phone call from an elderly person who just wanted to let the council know they will have difficulty shoveling out around a fire hydrant. She said she can get out to get her newspaper, but she's gonna have a hard time shoveling. And I did talk to her, I said, I know that in the past, the upbeat students and things will help with that, so I said, you know, I may try to work with her to help her get in contact with upbeat.
Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, we understand some people have trouble getting out there just to clean their driveway. And I don't think this is really, you know, applies to everyone, but we understand if there's some places, I'm sure the town or a neighbor, the upbeat organization would help out if we, you know, people call in and they can't do it, we understand that physically, they may not be able to do it. We'll find a way to help them. So, thanks on that. Okay, so, take a motion?
Okay, I will move to adopt amendments to Section 14-11 entitled, "Removal of Snow and Ice, Identifying Who Will Be Responsible to Clear Fire Hydrants After a Snow or Sleet or Ice Storm, So That the Fire Department Shall Have Unimpeded Access to the Fire Department." New glasses, sorry.
Hydrant, yeah, hydrant, yeah. Second on that, thank you, Karen. Any further comments from council?
Quick question.
I have one too.
Yeah.
How much, I don't, I didn't see it specifically enumerated, what is the penalty or the fine?
It's in the fee schedule, I believe, I think it was $100.
And that would be $100 I take at each occurrence?
Yes. I will say, I've been here three years, and I don't think, I don't remember anybody being fined for not shoving the sidewalk. Normally, we, the police go and just ask them to shovel the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not, yeah, I mean, most people do it, and we don't, I don't, like I say, we haven't remember any fines, but just some people need to be reminded. I think that's more what this ordinance is for, but go ahead, Karen.
So I just had a question about the woman who called you, who was just able to get out to get her newspaper. Does she pay to have her driveway or sidewalks done?
She didn't, she didn't say.
So you have to wonder, you know, curiosity, if she's paying to have a driveway or sidewalk done, then you just ask them to complete the job and do the hydrant. And it's for the safety of not just her, but her neighbors, so it really should be done. It's time that we got it on the books.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Number three is our, to adopt the truck idling prohibition citations and fine ordinance. So, I mean, we explained that, we had, you know, a particular situation where we really didn't have anything to enforce, and it was a problem for the residents in that area, and, you know, this will give us a little bit more enforcement action should a business or trucks parked somewhere by residents, or by businesses too, you know, that keep them running and obviously create a pollution problem and a noise problem for the whoever is nearby, so. So we'll take a motion on this?
Okay, move to adopt the ordinance entitled, "Truck Idling Prohibition, Citations and Fines."
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number four is to suspend real estate taxes for New Sunny Ledge Development LLC. This is a, an ongoing, issue's been going on for about seven years. Kevin Delaney is here to go through the details about the reasons for to suspend the taxes for this development.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yes, we know it's been quite a issue in that development for a long time, unfortunately.
It has.
For the residents, owners.
Definitely.
Yeah.
You know, the effort that we're hopefully culminating tonight is part of the broader tax collection process. You probably all are aware of the tax sale efforts, the sheets that are downstairs. The flip side of that is also evaluating when taxpayers come forward and question the legitimacy of what we're taxing. If you're not questioning the legitimacy and the taxes are late, then the town is fully prepared to proactively pursue collection. In this instance, there's somewhat of a conflict between a couple of the parts of the Connecticut general statutes, and it's been going on for quite a while with this property. And we finally met a couple of weeks ago, corporation counsel, town manager, assessor, tax collector, myself, as well as the association president and their attorney. And we've been looking at this now for several weeks and evaluating whether there is a legitimate claim on the part of the town to be able to collect the taxes. And I think, given that there is enough of a question, it's in the town's best interest to suspend the tax. Certainly, the overarching issue there would be the statutes, but secondary to that, but also, I think of great value, is the potential, when we do this, for the association to contract with a builder and potentially finish the seven condos. That clearly represents an improvement to the condo complex. Certainly, it's an enhancement to safety, and from a town perspective, it would put seven condominiums on the tax roll where there is clearly a legitimate tax claim. So, I believe it's in the best interest of the town, certainly in the best interest of the residents who are there, to suspend the taxes and try to move forward.
Any questions for Mr. Delaney? No? Yeah, I mean, it certainly seems to make sense. I know it's been a difficult development, I remember it from planning and zoning days, and it's still not completed, which is, you know, I know, difficult for the owners that are there now, but this seems to make sense. Give them some relief and hopefully get that complex completed. So, anyway. Okay, hearing no other comments from the council, take a motion on this?
Okay, move to suspend Grand List 2010 through 2017 real estate taxes of $63,316.43 plus interest and fees for the New Sunny Ledge Development LLC property located at 270 New Britton Road in Berlin.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Oh, good, okay, great. I figured, I figured that out finally, where, who you were, yeah, I figured that out, but good for you. You know, we know it's been very challenging for all of you in there, it's been dragging on forever, right? I just remember when the first, it was getting built, I was on planning and zoning, and here we are, still talking about it, right? But hopefully, you're moving in the right direction from what it sounds like? So, yeah, hopefully, right?
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah.
That we can help out in some way. All right, all right.
Welcome. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Agenda item number five is to purchase a boat and motor for the Town of Berlin Fire Department. Jim Simons is here to discuss the particulars of purchasing the boat.
That thing has been going on forever, huh? Yeah. I was wondering why. Oh, my goodness. I know, it's horrible, I feel bad for them.
Sorry.
Okay.
Just waiting for you.
Hey, Jim, we know you're there. How you doing? All right, what do we, what do we got?
We got, we got...
What do we got? Hey, we almost got some applause, but that doesn't happen very often, all right? It's like almost never, so we had one little clap, that's great, we'll all take that, right? Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll take what we can get. What do we got?
We're replacing and expanding a little bit the current boat for watercraft that's utilized by the fire department and the dive team. The current boat is a, actually, it's a 9.6, and we're going to a 12.6, which is a little bit longer. It's also a little bit wider, Zodiac boat, inflatable boat. And with the current boat, because of its size, when we bring out the divers, we actually have the divers straddle the pontoons, which isn't really a safe thing, but we get them out there and get in operation. And that's with a very small motor. So, when we're, not so much when we're going out for dive recovery, because when we're going out for dive recovery, everything's pretty slow. But when you're going out for any type of rescue or anything like that, you need a little speed, so the motor size is a little bit increased. So the boat, the motor actually has been in the fire department since I've been there. It was there when I got there, so that's over 40 years ago. And this is the second boat that's been purchased for the fire department. The first one was an aluminum boat that the fire department still has, and actually, Park and Rec uses it to maintain their bubblers and everything in the ponds from now. But this boat was purchased in, I think it was 2004 or 2005. And we found that it's been through some repairs, it also is an inflatable boat, but when they bring it up onto the beaches and things like that, because we don't have sandy beaches, we have rocky beaches, we've had to do keel work on it and things like that. So it's time, it's time to not only replace it, but it's time to maybe get a little bigger boat and be a little more efficient. So, that's where we are.
And, and you, you found the money, and...
Yes.
I know, I know it was in the budget and it was ours.
Yeah, it was an item that was in the capital plan, and the capital plan was one of the items that we could cut from the capital plan, and we could utilize some money that we had within the budget in capital accounts that were not expended. So with the permission back when we did the budget, we moved forward with the project.
Okay. Okay, great. Take a motion on this, and then we can ask some questions.
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, sure, yes, absolutely.
So, why this boat and why waive it? There's no, you didn't talk about that part.
Okay. Why this boat? The boat, we have to, we only have one boating ramp in town, and many of our areas are off the, off the highways or in the backyard, so we have to have the ability not only to deploy the boat at the boating ramp, but we also have to have the ability to carry this boat into remote areas so we can deploy it.
Back to station.
And, so, so this boat will meet those needs. Being a Zodiac boat, it's built just for rescue, it's not built for fishing or doing other things, it's built for fish, for rescue. So that's why the department selected this boat. Why are we waiving the fees, or waiving the...
Yeah.
Purchasing requirements? Because it's a Zodiac boat, and it has a sole source provider of Defender, which is located down in Old Sabre, down that way, in which we, I believe I supplied you with the sole source provider. That, if we went out to bid, we would end up with the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
What are we doing with the boat that we're replacing?
The current boat will be deflated and put away in storage.
So we'll still have it in case of emergency?
It will still be available if we have something.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the, questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay. I move to waive the town purchasing requirements to purchase one Zodiac ERB 380 and a Mercury 15-horsepower four-stroke motor from Defender Industries of Waterford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $13,692, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved.
Excuse me, agenda item number six is also for Jim Simon. It's to request the purchase of two large dump trucks and one medium-sized dump truck and the snow-related ice control equipment. There's actually two parts to this, to this agenda item. One is to purchase the truck chassis, and the other part is to purchase the snowplow and equipment that go along with those trucks. They, you buy them in separate packages. And Jim's done an extensive amount of research and talked with several of these vendors to try to get a price and delivery. I think the ones he's recommending are the ones that will meet the needs of the town and also the delivery schedule, which allows us to get them delivered and up and running before, you know, sometime during the snow, snow season. I'll leave the rest to Jim.
So, let's take the chassis. So, we'll take the history first. The history is, obviously, we approached the capital committee and then the budgeting committee, the finance department, or board, with the purchase of trucks, because we haven't purchased trucks in a while, and we have some trucks that have some bad frames and things like that on them. So it became a priority to replace these trucks. With the late approval of the budget, kind of put a little bit of crunch here and there, we went out and, I went out and I spoke to some of the major players, which was Kenworth, Peterbilt, International. Both Peterbilt and International, we currently have those trucks. Peterbilt, we have three of them, the Internationals, we have, we got, right now, we have eight, and we'll be replacing some of those. So, went out, developed a specification for that chassis, went out, talked to them. My main thing was availability, because we're in a crunch, and with that, we want to try to get some trucks in here in the next six months. And usually, you can do that. What I found out was that there is such a backlog on building of trucks, that Peterbilt could not even give us a build date for the chassis after January. Kenworth didn't really give us a build date. In fact, they didn't complete the full request for pricing and, and build dates. And International, the International dealer in, in the state is a big dealer, and they have five different locations. They had slots for stock vehicles. So, what we were able to do with them was, we were able to take those slots and convert those slots over to what we wanted for a specification of a truck, which is a state DOT specification truck, which is, the last four trucks we purchased back in 2014, 2015, were those same trucks. So, got all the pricing, got everything, you can see it in front of you now. International came in at the cheapest cost, met the needs. They tell us they can supply the trucks for us in the fall, and that's why we went with that. I will make a note that in 2014, 2015, the price of the trucks completed was $171,882. The price of the trucks completed is $171,886, four dollars difference.
It's amazing.
That's nice.
Why is that, I wonder? No price increases, we're not complaining?
No price increases.
I guess, though...
We, we did a lot of finagling.
Oh, well, that's good. Good for you.
Well, they have a lot of chips.
Good. Good for you, good for the town.
So...
So, it's that busy with this, so the truck manufacturers are that...
Actually, what I learned was that in the past year, there has been a problem delivering axles to the vendors or to the manufacturers, and because of that, there's a, there's a backlog of actually building trucks.
Wow. So, it's the axle manufacturer, whoever that may be?
Spicer, Dana, wherever, you know, there's a couple different ones out there. But they've been causing those backlogs.
Interesting. Jim?
Yes.
Does this fit in with your ability to, or your goal to standardize trucks?
Well, these would be, these three trucks, two of these trucks will be identical to the last four trucks we built. So, yes, it does, right, right there.
I thought.
There is a change in motor in these, in which we went from an International motor to a Cummings motor, but we went with that Cummings motor. We also have that Cummings motor in the three Peterbilts, and we're now purchasing those Cummings motors in the fire apparatus. So, standardization is there.
Good. Thanks.
For as much as the body, the Monroe body and Monroe plows, those are our standard bodies. That's what we have. Now, these are stainless steel bodies. So, with the stainless steel body down the road, what it's going to do is, it's going to do, reduce the amount of body repair or rust repair on the actual body itself. And my goal was, when I started purchasing stainless steel bodies, somewhere around, probably 15, maybe 18, somewhere around there, being able to remove those bodies off of the trucks and remount them on new chassis. And then, that will save the town down the road, the purchase of that body and hoist system.
Great.
Is it due to risk management or risk aversion that one company can't get it all done, that you went with three different ones? Or, because, I mean, you have International, Peterbilt, and Kenworth. Is there a reason why we didn't just go all international or all...
We did. We're, we're going to purchase the chassis all from International, okay? So, the first mark, the 83990, that's just the chassis of the truck.
Oh, got it, got it.
All right? And then, 171886 is the chassis plus the body or snow equipment, hydraulic systems and that. And then, the medium truck is 72925 for a medium ice chassis. The body, of course, it's the same body that you're going to be putting on them, it's just a little shorter.
Oh, got it. It's a whole package.
So, so the actual package, now, when we went through the budget season, we went through the budget season saying that we were going to spend $200,000 a year for a total of $600,000. This package that I'm giving you tonight is $504,593, almost $100,000 less. Now, some of that $100,000 will have to make up for interest fees and things like that as we, as we bond them out, or as the finance department and finance board decides on how to, how to pay for them. But you're getting, you're getting a real sweet job.
Yeah, I think they, didn't we do like a lease?
We talked about a lease, yes.
Did they do, are they going to do a lease, or we don't know whether they're going to do yet?
I think that Kevin is probably better, he's, we've talked about different options.
Oh, all right. I mean, I, yeah, just come up, Kevin, because I, I thought during our budget discussions, that was the, that was the plan from the Board of Finance, was to lease them and we get the three trucks up front, right?
Yep.
We're paying the same each year in our budget, then we, and have them all at once, rather than buy a truck a year?
Leasing is one of the options. The other option is to roll it into our short-term note program. Right now, we're paying about 2% on our short-term notes, so if we were offered a leasing option for three years that was significantly higher than that, then we would do what we believe is in the financial interest of the town. And if it's going to cost us less to do short-term notes and pay for it over two years that way, 2%, rather than, say, like, a 5% lease, we'll use the short-term notes.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, so whatever the, but still...
It's cheaper for the town.
Right. Oh, yeah, that makes sense, but, but still, the short-term payment.
Oh, absolutely.
So, it's paid.
Absolutely.
And we have the trucks up front still, which is...
Absolutely.
Was, was the goal, to get rid of the three old ones, yeah. Okay, great.
To get rid of three, but we are going to, we are going to take one of the three that we're replacing...
Yep.
And retain that. Currently, our, our highway department and the, and the group down there does not have a spare truck. One of the things that I've been, that, you know, since I've been here, I've been working with Jim, talking about is, we need to have a spare, at least one spare truck, because during a storm, things happen, and we need to have a, have a truck. So, they are going to, they are going to select one of the trucks and, and we will have a spare at the end of this.
Great. Great. Thanks, Jim, for all your homework.
Thank you.
All the work. Take a motion on this?
We have two separate ones, right? Move to waive the town purchasing requirements to purchase three truck chassis from Nutmeg International Truck utilizing the Town of Chaplain contract, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. For an amount not to exceed $240,905, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Second motion?
Second motion. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase and install Monroe snow and ice equipment utilizing the Source Wall contract number 080114 MTE from New England Truck Equipment of Wallingford, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $263,688, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Motion carries.
And agenda item number eight, this is the last one for Jim. We're requesting to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase parts to rebuild the town's highway mower. And I can attest that this does happen periodically. The mower is a mower alongside the road. There are, you know, old guardrails, the wire from the guardrails. The other one is barbed wire. It gets, it's alongside the road. It gets wrapped up in the mower, it does a heck of a job on it. So, they need the ability to go and purchase the parts. I believe they're up to $11,000 so far purchasing parts. So, Jim, they need the flexibility to go do that and requesting to waive the fees. I'll leave the rest to Jim.
I can only imagine what you find on the side of the road with the mower, right? Yeah.
When the grass gets higher, it just covers everything up. So, it's the over-the-guardrail mower, the arm mower, and it got caught up in some arch cable that was left there from a guardrail job, and it went through the whole process. And that happened from time to time. And we rebuilt this mower a few times, the mower head. The tractor and everything's fine, but the mower head, and that's the piece that takes the abuse. This time, when it went through there, it not only blew the bearings out and it bent the main arbor shaft, but it actually took the housing, because as it wrapped up, the cable, when it wrapped up around there, had no place to go. So, it actually twisted and bent the housing, and we need a housing on this one. It did a job this time. So, we're going to salvage what we can and get what we can, order what we can, but when we do that, we're over that $10,000 mark. So, the machine comes out of Batchery Corporation, and that's where we get the parts from, and we're over that $10,000 mark.
Yeah. Self-explanatory.
Yes.
I will, I will make a note that my auto parts, this is going to take, in the first week of, the first week of the budget, this piece of equipment, this repair is 10% of my auto parts for the year.
Wow.
So, instead of, you know, as we move forward and we watch, then we try to, you know, corners here and save money there, and there probably will be some type of deficit or some type of effect when we get to February and March coming out of this.
Got it. Okay. I mean, you know...
It is what it is.
Stuff happens. We get it, you know? And that's what we have a contingency fund for, and that's what, we actually have some extra money in there this year, if we really, really get to the point of, you know, whether it's you or someone else, that's why it's nice to have a little bit of extra in there, you know? So, yeah, we understand. Okay. Take a motion on this?
Okay. I will move to waive the town's purchasing requirements to purchase necessary parts to rebuild the town's highway mower from Batchery Corporation of Enfield, Connecticut, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, so moved. Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
You have a good summer off.
You too. Yeah, you too.
Agenda item number nine is to approve from a sole-source contractor automated building systems purchase orders cumulatively, they add up to more than $10,000. And so, Doug Solk is here to discuss it. It's related to energy management controls. We have energy management systems in our buildings. We, at some point, they, they went without in building automation, and the sole source for that is New England, in New England, is automated building systems. And at this point, you wouldn't want to try to change these systems, so Doug's here to request approval to go with a sole-source contractor.
Okay. Come on up, Doug. Since you're sitting here, you might as well come up.
Good evening.
How you doing, Doug? How's it going?
I'm good. Blast her out tonight. We'll see you in September.
Yeah. We're all very sad we don't have meetings in August, but we'll get through it somehow, right? Yeah.
Stop it unofficially for a cookout.
Yeah, there we go. There we go.
We'll see you in September.
Yeah. Well, I'm very sad we don't have meetings in August, but we'll get through it somehow, right? Yeah.
Stop it unofficially for a cookout.
Yeah, there we go. There we go.
Uh, yeah, this is our annual service agreements. They exceed the $10,000 cumulative amount, so we threw in a little extra, just in case there's any unforeseen repairs that have to be associated for work not covered in the base agreement. So that's where the total amount came from. We hope not to use it, but just in case something comes up, we'll, we'll be pre-approved for the work.
Okay.
We'll let Jim hear that.
May need it.
Yeah, right. Okay. Any questions? Other questions, guys? No?
Good.
Okay. We'll take a motion on this?
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to increase the purchase orders for the sole-source service provider Automated Building Systems of Glastonbury, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $45,000 collectively.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next two are for Doug also. So, agenda item number 10 is approval for increasing purchase orders for materials up to $25,000. And we're gonna, it's based on the State of Connecticut DAS contracts. It's for five different contractors: FW Web, Granite Group, Electrical Wholesalers, All Phase Electric, and Northeast Electrical Distributors.
Okay.
Major suppliers for plumbing, heating, HVAC, electrical. So utilize all these vendors currently. And once again, any unforeseen's where we would exceed the 10,000 mark on purchases for this fiscal year, we have the ability to utilize the vendor with the best pricing.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions?
No.
No? Okay, we'll take a motion?
Move to increase the purchase orders as needed, up to $25,000 for the following vendors, utilizing the associated State of Connecticut DAS contracts, without cumulatively exceeding the uncommitted budget balance of each account from FW Web, Granite Group, Electrical Wholesalers, All Phase Electric, and Northeast Electrical Distributors.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Don't go away. Agenda item number 11 is similar. It's for, it's based on $25,000 utilizing various state contractor DAS contracts. The National IPA contract, it's for four contractors: Deiken Applied, Swan Associates, Calvert Safe and Lock, and Johnson Controls. These are ones that we use on our Facilities Department on a regular basis for control work, air conditioning, and doors and locks. So these are requests that we normally on an annual basis make.
Okay.
Yeah, Johnson Controls has acquired Simplex Cornell, so they do the fire, fire systems that are currently proprietary in some of the buildings. Deiken and Swan are the proprietary Deiken rep in the state for equipment and labor. They have those in the elementary schools, and most importantly, the high school chiller and power. And Calvert, we utilize for door and hardware, a lot of security work with the schools, so we've had good luck, good luck with these vendors. We've been using them for years, and just in case any unforeseen's come up where we exceed the 10,000 mark, we'll have the previous approval.
Okay. Take a motion?
Okay. Move to increase purchase orders as needed, up to $25,000 for the following vendors, utilizing the associated State of Connecticut DAS contracts, without cumulatively exceeding the uncommitted budget balance of each account.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good summer.
You too.
Doing all the tongue twisters. Come on.
Yeah, right.
Agenda item number 12, Chris Edge is here to discuss is the appropriation of property acquisition for a transit-oriented development grant that the Economic Development Group has received from the State of Connecticut, that grants an amount of $536,884. Chris is here to discuss the appropriation of that funds.
Yes, this is just following up on a grant we had gotten for the purchase of 861 Farmington Avenue and the rail bed behind the town-owned property at 889-903 and 913 Farmington Avenue, essentially appropriating it so we then can use the monies as we move forward with both projects.
Okay. Any questions for Chris? Yes.
Is this the site that we're having, that we're cleaning up?
This is not related to that site. The site itself, 889, is what we currently own. 861 is the building in front of it on Farmington Avenue that we had gotten the grant to purchase.
Yep.
And then the rail bed in the back is what we're looking to purchase. But no, this is not gonna go directly. 889 is just for those two properties.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And we're getting this for free?
This was a grant from the state, yes.
Perfect.
Yes. The 536 and change did come from the state, yes.
No match.
Somehow.
Perfect.
You are taxpayers, at least the town, right? I guess we're all state taxpayers, so.
It all comes out of somebody's pocket, right? Fortunately. But if it's helping the town, okay. So we'll take a motion on this?
Move to appropriate $536,884, the property acquisition for transit-oriented development account.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further questions? Discussion?
Sure, I have a question on where, how much was this grant total? Or did it matter? This was the total amount?
The total, yeah. The total amount was the 536, 889.
I don't ever remember discussing purchasing more property in Farmington Avenue, so I'm just trying to figure that one out, but.
Yeah, what, I mean, what-
Well, this property is related to what is happening on 889. There was, part of the plume from 889 could go onto this property.
Oh.
We, part of the long-term plan, again, is looking at the town's liability as well as redevelopment of the area. That was the main reason for looking for this property itself. Again, we do not know future use at this point, because we've just started the conversations, as you had agreed to at last council meeting-
Right.
With the developer, right now, essentially, we're, have the money for the property. Actually, the next item, the next two items, we'll go into it a little bit further.
Right. Yeah, I see, we see that, yeah.
We had discussed that previously, that these pieces of property, the rail spur and this piece of property, if it's the one that's in front of, it's in front of 889, it borders Farmington Avenue, we're having to enter into agreements with them to monitor or remediate the property.
No, I remember that discussion a long time ago, that, you know, we had to do some testing, and the testing could be going on forever, and there was gonna be costs for that, that were, there was huge numbers of proposals out there for us to, that we looked at many years ago, and starting to come back to me a little bit.
Yeah, and I think the-
Like you said, the liability, we, there was no way forensically to tell how that property was disturbed. You know, we accumulated a property for, you know, by foreclosure, and then the state started their project, and then the testing revealed issues. So what you're saying is we're worried about the liability, and this may help solve that.
Yes, we, with the Brownfields revitalization remediation program that the town is part of, gives us some protections liability-wise, particularly on 889. I think the plan is to take this property as part of 889 as one larger property, long-term, which, again, would help us at that point with what has gone off-site. Essentially, right now, there are a couple pieces still to be taken care of, including with Corporation Council, to make sure we're taken care of. But essentially, this was to look forward from the liability as well as the future development of the area.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, right? Can we make the motion?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Agenda item number 13, now, this is referencing the 861 Farmington Avenue. Is there authorized the town manager to enter an agreement regarding the purchase of that property? And it would be funded by that grant. And the total amount of the value of the property is $320,000. The property owner has offered to sell it to us for $300,000.
All part of the same plan, right? Obviously.
Part of the same plan. We did go through and had an appraisal done on the property, and it did come out at that number. Again, this would be from the 536,000, which we had gotten, so essentially would be, essentially passing through the money to the owner of the property of 861.
Okay.
I have a quick question. The information on our town website, when you could check properties, has this property appraised at a lower number? So I don't know if that's old information. You know, it was more in the $265,000 range. So I'm, you know, wondering if that's just old information? Has it caught up to current market? Or, you know, I see in here, it was appraised at 320. We settled on 3. I'm just trying to figure out where the number came from.
I do not have the answer on that one. I know we did end up getting a couple different proposals from appraisers on it. We did end up having one appraiser of the due appraised value. I do not have an answer for you. I know that the method that they may have been used may have been different between the assessor and the appraiser, but I do not know for certain.
I would just-
I'm not sure if it's 70% or not.
No. Is it 70?
We're gonna have to look at it. It might be, the list might be the study we've been trying to put, you know, they don't capture.
Well, I mean, it has an appraised value, and then it says the assessed values, 70% of the appraised value, so.
Well, mass, with all due respect to the assessor's office and the recently conducted revaluation, mass appraisal does not perform the fee appraisal exercise that somebody like Arnold Grant, who's an MAI appraiser, performs.
So that's why it would be, could be different.
You can't, with, you know, thousands of tax parcels, you can't do the comprehensive-
That's all I was asking.
Containing appraisal, so. So it doesn't surprise me to hear that-
Better word, comprehensive.
Computer-generated.
Mass appraisal is, yeah, to a certain extent, it's based on an algorithm, but, you know, 265, 300, I mean, it's in the ballpark.
Okay.
So-
It was a state that required the appraisal.
That word, comprehensive, was a good word. I understand that.
The state, the state required the appraisal because the grant proceeds are being used for the acquisition.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, you know, let's say we vote yes on this, but you still gotta review it. You could check, right? You could just check that, just to see if there's any difference? Or you think that we're gonna stand by that appraisal? You think that's the right one?
The contract, the draft contract is for less than the appraised value. The state wanted the appraisal to make sure that-
That it's less.
-the $300,000 value.
Got you. Okay. All right.
Okay, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions? Hearing none? I'll take a motion?
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of 86165 Farmington Avenue for $300,000 to be funded from the property acquisition for transit-oriented development grant account, pending approval from the Board of Finance and subject to review and approval of the Corporation Council.
Second on that? Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 14 is for Chris also. It's to authorize to enter into a contract with LaRrow Engineering for environmental due diligence of 861 Farmington Avenue. It's the wave, it's also a request to waive the town's bidding procedures to allow the town manager to enter into the contract. I will say that LaRrow has been doing work in the area to bring another environmental firm in to come up to speed with cost, the mower would take much more time. And Chris is here to discuss it.
Yes, LaRrow was the one that's been doing the testing on 889, as well as the onsite wells for 861. So they've been working on it. This is for two things. One would be for looking at where an above-ground tank was, to make sure there was nothing that had leaked from it. The second was the building materials. Occasionally, there are different materials within older buildings that can be hazardous. We wanna make sure we're coming into our eyes open on those particular things, and that is what this contract is for.
Any questions for Chris on this? Take a motion on this?
Okay. I will move to waive the town's bidding procedures and authorize the town manager, subject to approval of the Board of Finance, to enter into a contract with LaRrow Engineering in the amount of $21,115 to be paid from the state regional Brownfields grant project account. Environmental remediation for the property at 861 Farmington Avenue, Berlin, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Jack, you're on.
Town manager's report. Okay, well, since we just got talking about the TOD, I will say that the town is working, currently working with the developer that we discussed last time, and we are working on the contract. Jeff's been, our attorney's been involved, looking at the contract. We are working on the details as far as how we wanna structure it, to have them work with us on a conceptual design for that area. That's proceeding. The Water Control Commission is making, is coming to the, probably near the end, for their invoice conversion. In the past, we've invoiced the Water Control Commission out of the town tax department. I believe you're aware that earlier in the year, we decided to outsource that to Connecticut Water to do the work for us. That's their business. We, we are, our, our software is extremely old, is not supported well. We made a decision internally that it was, it'd be better to outsource that to somebody who does that for a business. I can tell you, I'm ready for this to happen. In the last few months, we get a lot of questions about issues with the invoicing. It's in some interesting readings that we're getting because of the software package. I've spent a lot of time with residents, going over the bills with them, so I'm ready for this to take place. So probably by the time you get back in September, we'll be, we'll be starting down the trial runs of that, and have it up and running shortly thereafter. There's a project within the Water Control Commission, the Belcher Brook Interceptor, the lining project has started. That, that's important for, because we have a lot of infiltrate, we, the town has, in some of the past storms, received notices from, regarding, from Matta Bassett District, regarding the amount of flow that we have. Our flow goes up well over what our permitted flow is allowed because of inflow and infiltration. This is one of the projects we've had on board, coming on board for the last couple of years. It's with a state, we're using a state low-interest loan to fund it, and there, so there'll be lining, the interceptor goes near Belcher Brook, down by Willard School and in that area. So that project has started. We, the, Chris is still here. We've recently met with the Main Street business owners. I think you know that we're looking at making some modifications to the design of Main Street in Kensington. We did that project about two years ago. We've talked to the owners, and said, it's not, it doesn't work really well for them. You know, we're making some changes. But as part of that, we're looking at constructing a parking lot in that triangular space between Dairy Queen and the businesses, making a, like, a small parking lot behind there. We're working, we have a grant, we have some grant monies that we're believing we can fund that with. So we've met with the, all of the business owners recently, and I believe they are all in favor of this, and so we're, we're starting down the draft contract phase to see how we can work out the contracts, so we can do that. And that will help alleviate the parking. The largest criticism we receive back from the business owners is the modification reduced number of parking spaces they have. They would like more parking spaces available. The space is, is, is good as far as proximity. It will allow us to have up to 21 more spaces and ease some of the, some of the congestion down there. It was interesting talking with them. One, one item that came up, and I'll be honest, I never thought about, is one of the owners is concerned about overflow parking from the train station. He believes that once the train station starts charging for parking, people will, are there, walk over. I had not really given that any thought.
Probably that will happen, right?
We're gonna have to watch that. I mean, we're gonna have to have police presence and watch that. High Road Bridge is coming along, and I would say that it's coming along pretty much on schedule. We're pushing them to get that complete by, by October this year, so that we, once winter[1486.51] comes, we will, we will not have to have detour any further. Current paving projects are on schedule. They are in the Schultz Road area right now. We're doing grinding and paving and working on that. Doug has left, but the vestibule projects have started. There's been some, they're doing some asbestos abatement, and then they're working on, shortly start installing the window film. They've done some, and as far as the actual changing of the design, they're, they're doing some detailed drawings for final approval. Working with the schools, talking with Brian Benigni. We will be doing them all at the same time. I explained to him that, you know, that that's going to take longer. Brian is, Brian is in agreement. He would prefer to do it that way. He said, you know, he doesn't want to have to prioritize one school over another. He would prefer to do them all at one time. So we're working together on that. We met again today to discuss the details of that. The contracts for the jail cells are going, are in their final stages. I believe it's drafted, and there's just some, some minor tweaks that need to take place. I believe the final contract for the police study, the space study downstairs is, is almost complete. And the last thing is, we did go out and, and look for a new public works director. We received four resumes. Three of them, I think, are, are good, that they should be reviewed. So we have a, a five-person review team that will start reviewing those and meeting the week of the, of August 13th, start the interviewing process.
Thanks. So the business owners, though, are happy on Main Street with...
I don't know if they're ever happy.
Wow, well, I mean, we know that...
But they're glad, they are, they're glad that we're looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
Each one of them has different needs.
Yeah.
And some of the, I think some of their criticism is reasonable.
Yeah.
And so we are trying to accommodate that. We're going to work on the parking, and then we're going to continue to make some modifications. As part of this design, there's some changes to Main Street. We're going to lower some of the islands because you can't make certain turns.
Yeah.
I think the fire department and the police department are happy because they say they were not involved in the original design. So if you have a fire department coming down New Bern Avenue that tries to take that corner, go in the wrong direction, they can't do it.
Right.
So we're making adjustments to change that and open up some parking for them.
Right. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? What's going on at McGee? There's been a lot of questions on Facebook about it. Trees are cut down and...
The trees were dead.
Oh, they were dead, so that's why they brought it down?
And I was, and I'll be asked, I was driving around with Steve Carpenter, and I said, those trees are dead, you need to take them down. The tree warden has to authorize that.
Okay.
And I'm a certified tree warden, so I asked them to have them removed. It's a liability to the town.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
That was all.
Oh, cool. Okay.
Okay. Special committee reports? We haven't had any. We'll probably have to, at some point, we're going to reconvene the ordinance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to say that. We are working on a couple of things, the ordinance, I'm going to get the information for you on the ordinances. I'd like to, if, if people are available toward the end of August, be able to reconvene. Those two ordinances, we'll have them rewritten.
Yeah, what's my, one's the tax, what's the other?
One's on the building commi, one's on the building department. We have to change the wording because...
Oh, right, yes.
What was changed?
Oh, yes.
The one that was on the taxes.
Taxes, okay, okay.
And if people are available toward the end of August, we'd like to reconvene them.
Yeah, we'll maybe send something now, mid-August, we can pick a day for those of us on the ordinance committee. Nothing else?
I'm going to work on getting the Fields Committee reconvened and...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. I'm with you.
Right. Fields Committee, we have to do that.
It's okay.
Okay, so council of communications. Karen?
Good today.
You good?
What's up?
Just have two quick things real quick, not to keep us long. We'll go to our executive session in a minute, so I just wanted to, there's a couple of things I read in the Board of Finance minutes that I just want to, for the record, I want to correct them because I think it's important. So at the public hearing that the Board of Finance had, Speaker of the House, Sarah Simowitz, mentioned or announced, I guess, that there'll be, there's a million dollars available for Berlin and the bonding, state bonding account. And that was reiterated in the Board of Finance meeting. So I had some conversations the last couple of days with Joe, Sarah Simowitz, and that money's actually reduced to $750,000, but, but he's going to get back to us, and ultimately he will talk to the town and talk to the council about what that money can be used for, and we're looking at it towards a senior center, community center, is what, you know, we have been talking, Representative Sarah Simowitz has been talking to the town for a couple of years about some funding that's, you know, an amount that obviously wouldn't fund a whole center, but, so he and I have had a little bit of a discussion about it, what we can do with it, use it for. So in the coming, hopefully, weeks, we'll, you know, he'll get, going to get back to us with some more information, and we can discuss that, just, you know. So, I mean, we, we haven't really had the formal, I don't think, offer yet. I mean, he mentioned it at the public hearing, but he will, so we'll work on that. And the other thing that was mentioned, and then I'm just, I just read the minutes of the Board of Finance meeting, was that there was a school security committee meeting, and there was not. So we are, what we're doing in school security beside the vestibules and a couple of other things, we are going to, we're gathering some information, because one of the issues that we're looking at as a town is to put some additional guards in the schools. We have a school resource officer now in the high school and one at McGee. We'll be going, if they're not at McGee, they'll be back at McGee.